They have split North Carolina A and T into separate districts.
The mother of Ammar Army.
Overnight, nationwide unrest following the death of George Floyd.
The reason why young people, millennials, Gen Z'ers are in these streets, it's not because they're filled with rage, it's because they're filled with righteousness.
Give me what the Unitarian Church gave these protesters here in Louisville, Kentucky. Give me a sanctuary.
After police say they blocked traffic, according to the Burlington Times News, hundreds of people gathered near the courthouse this afternoon to hear people talk about voting rights.
Marchers posted on social media showing the gathering in Graham outside the Alamance County courthouse. Police say the group began blocking traffic, which led officers to spray pepper spray at the ground. Those in the crowd say that is not what happened.
You pepper sprayed children.
Marchers to the polls could be heard gasping and coughing, some of them helped others back to their feet and doused water in their eyes after they say tear gas was used on them. In a statement, the North Carolina Democratic Party says, quote, "The actions of these officers represents completely unwarranted police hostility and voter suppression." This group of North Carolinians was fully within their First Amendment rights to hold their protest and march to the polls.
Justice for the next generation.
Justice for the next generation.
There's a storm out on the ocean and it's moving this whole way. If your soul is not anchored in justice, you will surely drift away. Graham, what do we want? And where do we want it?
Good evening.
Good evening.
In these uncertain times, the consequences of elections have mattered more now than ever. It's important to engage with anybody that steps up to run for office. My name is Haywood McCoy, a former student and proud member of Justice for the Next Generation. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the City Council Summit. In just a few moments, it will be our pleasure to platform your concerns and we encourage you to lift your voice. So, thank you for being here tonight and welcome to the conversation. Let's have a word of prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for another day and another opportunity that you have brought us here before you. Lord God, we just want to thank you for your presence, we want to thank you for your concern, we want to thank you for your all-seeing eye, Lord God, and your faithfulness towards us. We want to thank you for this opportunity that you have given us to have a voice, Lord God, to platform these concerns and know that we are not just heard by you, Lord God, but by those around us that you have set with a purpose and a vision. So, Lord God, we pray that you have your way and, Lord God, we pray that there will be nothing but peace, Lord God, as well, Lord, as your, Lord God, your ever-so-close ear to us, Lord God. It's in Jesus's name that we do pray. Amen. I have the honor of introducing our host for tonight. He's a proud alum and former SGA president from the illustrious North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University. He is the pastor of 22 years of the Citadel Church and founder of Justice for the Next Generation. He has been like a father to me and I credit his mentorship for my concern for justice and my civic engagement. But before we bring out the man, we want to share with you the ministry.
Thanks for joining me. Well, it's unsure now, but I have very important updates. I was told we would not be able to have our service and that we would need to go virtual due to a double booking at the same timeframe at our location.
Born in a city where many come to learn.
End apart to eat.
Was a vision to reach souls.
To be transformed by God's Holy Spirit.
Saved from a world of darkness.
And loved unconditionally in the Imago Dei.
We are the Citadel.
We exist out of our desire to fulfill the Lord's call.
To pray without ceasing.
To stand up for justice for the poor and the marginalized.
To feed the hungry and heal the hurting.
To serve and embrace beloved community.
We're centered in Christ, enveloped by love and light.
We are the Citadel.
We're motivated by our many struggles.
A faith community whose weaknesses are also its strengths with an incredible journey.
Worshipping from place.
To place.
To place.
To place.
All in an effort to find a home.
We are Citadel.
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 Please welcome our host Reverend Greg Drumright and pastor of the Citadel.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your presence. I want to hurry on to the conversation. We just wanted to let you all know who J4TNG is and the Citadel Church's presence in our community. We're here for a non-adversarial but direct conversation tonight. And so, if you haven't had the opportunity to fill out a question card, which is just nothing but an index card. Richards can either get you a card or collect your card and we'll get those over to the moderator. In an effort for your questions to be concise, please don't fill out two or three questions in one question. Our moderator is encouraged to choose just one of your queries. Also, we want to be respectful of these folks' decision to step up and run. This is not a partisan conversation. This is about the direction of the city of Greensboro. So, we ask that you be direct, but be respectful of all of the responses that you hear tonight. Candidates, we have a time screen here for you. You can see it once you get on the dais, but if you go over time, you'll see someone waving you down in the back. And if the conversation gets out of hand, the moderator is going to make the call to just cut the mics and we'll pull it back together. It is important for us to keep decorum at all times this evening. Also, we are live streaming on Facebook and YouTube. It is live. If you want to invite others to witness this conversation, this summit, please direct them to my socia's, Greg Drumright, and that is on YouTube and on Facebook. And again, we thank you all for being here and it gives me great privilege and honor to introduce one of Greensboro's finest and loudest voices. For over two decades, Wild Irish Rose has served our community as a radio personality. She's coming in from the back. Will you help me to receive? Author, community leader, entrepreneur, and consummate businesswoman, our moderator tonight, Dr. Irish Spencer. The candidates will come forth as I introduce them and I'll start with the at-large group. And we beg your pardon for the delay in our start time. We're graced by candidates that we didn't know were coming, so we got even more candidates than we expected. Irving Allen is running for Greensboro City Council at large. He brings extensive grassroots leadership and community organizing experience. He has worked with Ignite NC and the beautiful Trouble Network and co-founded the Gate City chapter of Black Lives Matter. His focus is advancing equity, affordable housing, and stronger neighborhoods. Let's welcome Urban Allen. Carla Franklin, running for City Council at large with a vision for safer neighborhoods, good jobs, and reliable city services. She hails as a graduate from both Duke and Columbia Universities. She has nearly two decades of leadership in technology and strategy, including roles at Amazon and IBM. She also leads Moms of Color for School Choice. Please welcome Carla Franklin. Hugh Holston is running for reelection at City Council at large, where he has served with distinction. More than 20 years of experience in finance and strategic planning. He has held leadership roles at Wells Fargo, AT&amp;T, and Lincoln Financial. He is a graduate of UNC Chapel Hill and a longtime Greensboro resident. Michael McKinney is running for Greensboro City Council at large. A husband, a father, a community leader committed to safe, supportive neighborhoods. He leads Piedmont Business Capital and works with the NC Realtors Housing Opportunity Foundation to grow small businesses and expand affordable housing. Welcome, Michael McKinney. Jamila Pender is seeking reelection to City Council at large, where she has been a strong servant leader. She has served on nearly two dozen city boards and commissions and is the Director of Community Engagement and Impact at Cone Health. She is a graduate of Dudley High School and North Carolina A and T, Jamila Pender. Denise Roth is running for Greensboro City Council at large and she brings leadership experience at local, national, and federal levels. She served as Greensboro City's manager and administrator of the U.S. General Service Administration under President Barack Obama. She's deeply rooted in Greensboro and offers trusted leadership, Denise Roth. Running in District One, we have a candidate tonight, Crystal Black. She's spent more than two decades championing equity and opportunity. She has led disaster relief, secured private funding for schools, launched initiatives like STEM and MyCity and Love Your Block. With her city board experience, she is ready to lead on day one. Monica Walker is also running for City Council in District Two. With more than two decades of experience advancing justice, equity, and investment in Greensboro, from her start as a visiting lecturer to her leadership in diversity and inclusion, she has always turned passion into action. Ladies and gentlemen, Monica Walker. April Parker is running for City Council District Two, bringing her expertise as a cultural organizer, community advocate, and founder of Architect of Black Space. She's led major equity-focused initiatives, making Juneteenth an official city holiday and launching a festival that draws thousands of years. She hails from UNCG with a master's degree, April Parker. Also, running in District Three is Zach Matheny. I'm sorry, let me back up. April Parker is running in District Three. I apologize. District Three. Now, they had that on here wrong, but I got you. Zach Matheny is also here, running in District Three. He is a sitting councilman, running for reelection to continue delivering smart growth, safer neighborhoods, and transparent leadership. He brings years of experience. Is Zach here? Oh, he's coming. Okay. He brings years of experience and a proven record, including lending 500 million in downtown revitalization projects focused on jobs, accountability, and collaboration. Zach is dedicated to building a stronger and more connected Greensboro, everybody. Running in District Four is Nikki Smith. Bringing more than 45 years of experience as a successful business owner and community advocate. He's passionate about driving smart growth and supporting small businesses, creating opportunities for residents with practical and solution-oriented approaches. Nikki is ready to help Greensboro prosper, everybody. Also in District Four is Steve Ignak. Steve Ignak is running for Council District Four because he believes local government should be practical, personal, and focused on real people's needs. Since moving to Greensboro two years ago, he listened closely to residents concerned about growth and infrastructure and affordability. Nikki, Steve Ignak, everybody. Steve Ignak. He's running in... Steve, I want to clarify. You're running in District Four. Okay. District Four. All right. In District Five is Tammy Thurn. Tammy Thurn is running for District Five on the City Council, where she proudly served since 2017. With decades of leadership in business and community service, she's worked to improve housing, transportation, and downtown development. Tammy remains deeply committed to strengthening Greensboro and ensuring families and businesses and neighborhoods succeeding together, everybody. Tammy Thurn. All right, we have some candidates that graced us here. I'm going to work on their introduction, literally on the spot. Samuel Hawkins is also running for City Council at large and we welcome him. From 2015 to 2018, Mr. Hawkins was a former Chair of the Human Relations Commission, which is known as the Human Rights Commission. He also served as the Commissioner of the Minimum Housing Standards Commission and is also the Commissioner of the Greensboro Criminal Justice Advisory Commission over the last two years. Thank you so much, Mr. Hawkins, for joining us. I also see Mr. Jim Key. Mr. Jim Key, everybody. Mr. Jim Key is a seated member of North Carolina A and T's Board of Trustees, where he has committed himself to focus on A and T's growth and continued revitalization in the city of Greensboro and across America. Mr. Key is also a former Greensboro City Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Key, for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Key, for joining us. We now welcome our mayoral candidates. Our mayoral candidate currently seated on the council running for Greensboro Mayor is Ms. Mary Kay Abuzweider. She brings over a decade of serving Greensboro, North Carolina, upon the council, and she is elated to run for your mayor's position, where she has already began working on housing initiatives, and she wants to continue her work as mayor on Greensboro's future growth and prosperity as being a premier American city. Ms. Mary Kay Abuzweider. Mrs. Mary Kay Abuzweider. Mr. Mark Cummings is also running for mayor. Mr. Mark Cummings, Attorney Mark Cummings brings over a decade of leadership as a former Greensboro attorney, one of the youngest to be seated as a judge here in Guilford County. Mr. Mark Cummings is a highly educated individual, and he believes that he is very competent of leading Greensboro back into one of the top positions as an American city. Mr. Mark Cummings, everyone. And finally, Mr. Robbie Perkins. Mr. Robbie Perkins is a former mayor of Greensboro, North Carolina, who is running again to continue his work in establishing Greensboro as being one of the premier destinations in our state for businesses and future development. Mr. Robbie Perkins is the president of one of Greensboro's Realtor Associations, and he brings over three decades of experience in community leadership and development. Running for mayor, Mr. Robbie Perkins. Running in District Two is Ms. Cecil, Cecile, C.C. Crawford, everybody. Bringing lived experience, community leadership, and a deep commitment to standing with people she serves. Ms. Crawford is a mother who has faced many of the same challenges Greensboro's families experience, and she understands the importance of equitable solutions. With degrees from North Carolina A&amp;T and UNCG and a career focused on housing justice, Cecile is ready to deliver people first in her leadership of District Two. Everybody, these are your candidates for the upcoming City Council elections. And you are now in the capable hands of our moderator, Dr. Irish Spencer. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you. Let me say this, and y'all know how I am. If you don't, get used to it. How many have you been to candidates laid out like this? Not one. Not one. So we want to thank this organization for doing this. And we're gonna, we're gonna get started. And we're gonna start with something called Off the Rift. And off the riff, I'm gonna ask the question, and I need you to answer it. And they've got the timer behind me. But trust and believe, if you go over, I'm gonna cut your mic off. If I can cut off Tupac's mic, I can cut yours off. And he's dead. All right, off the riff, this is your question. It's a rapid-fire round where you are tasked with sharing the art, sharing with the audience what you will focus on on your first 12 months of taking office. If you need to write it down, whatever you need to do. If time allows, you should follow up with what a broader focus across your entire term may look like. So again, does anyone need that repeated? That'll let us know who's slow. I will, mhm, what I tell you. This is a rapid-fire round where you are tasked with sharing with the audience what you will focus on in the first 12 months of taking office. Okay? Now, I'm gonna call each name out, and we're gonna get started. And I'm gonna start with, now, if I call your first name wrong, it's not that I don't know you, baby, it's because I can't see it. I can see that red quicker than I can see that black. So we're gonna start with Ms. Tammy. And if the timekeeper's started, let's go.
My first 12 months back on council, I'll be focused on continuing a project that I've been working on for a couple of years now. That's Greensboro's first permanent supportive housing project with full wraparound services for mental health, physical health, and community for our homeless population. I am very excited that just recently we have identified and procured a piece of property for this project. We are working with a service provider on bringing this to reality, along with a host of folks that are going to help us raise money to make this a public-private project. In addition to that, I'll be working to support my neighborhoods in District Five and supporting, in particular, investments in our parks. District Five has been short-changed in parks and parks investment for quite some time. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Black.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead with the quick, the answer.
So I call this a quick win, and what quick wins we can have when we first come into office. One of the main things that I hear from communities that I work with has to do, has to be centered around code enforcement and the lack of code enforcement. That is the broke-down cars, the parking in front yards, the things that are the catalyst for the deteriorations of our communities. Another part of that, another tier to that is, is that there is nothing on the books right now with our city council that holds commercial properties accountable. And we find that in underserved communities, a lot of the buildings that are in our areas are deteriorating, and we have no, no tools as community members to use to enforce on those property owners. So I would like to get five votes from council members to show that we are collective in improving our communities, not only with our neighborhood members, but also our community members that have commercial properties.
Thank you. Jim Key. Is Jim's mic on? Because I don't want to take up no extra time with Jim. There we go.
Good evening. The first thing that I'll be focusing on my first 12 months is increasing the housing stock. We need 50,000 houses at least in Greensboro, and we need 50,000 beds at A&amp;T. So I'll be focused on both of those. I will also be focusing on decreasing crime, like I did when I was on council before. We decreased crime by 9% in District Two. I'll also be focusing on lowering taxes in the water bill, just like we, like I did in 2011. And I will be focusing on creating a $120 million Economic Development Fund for small businesses, nonprofits, churches, and universities, and any citizens that's increasing the tax base in Greensboro. And I will also focus on placing the homeless in permanent homes with greenhouses that they can grow fish and vegetables and become sustainable, and will also power everything using solar energy.
What I would like to focus on in the next 12 months, I just got appointed seven months ago. So knowing, coming in a place where I was just appointed and now going in if elected in the next 12 months is building my brain trust. So getting a group of advisors, because I've been out here working collectively with community, with businesses, and saying, who are those expert matters that can help us to be able to address some of the challenges that we're having? In addition to that, I will continue to work on our small business opportu, our Office of Business Opportunity, where I've been doing some work there. And then going back to the housing component around commercial ordinance, I've been working with our city attorney's office as well as with our ordinance department to look at what is ways that we can look at to be able to enforce some of the ordinances that we have so that it's equitable and so that we can look at making sure we're looking at revitalization in our communities. And then lastly, continuing to work with our community of office engagement with the police department and community neighborhoods to address community engagement in our communities to decrease, decrease harm.
Thank you so very much. Housing, housing, and housing. Getting folks into it and also keeping folks in it. Right now, we're in a housing crisis. The prices are too darn high. We need student housing, we need, we need senior housing, we need McMansions, we need apartments, we need brownstones. And we on the city council are a part of the problem because we've been bringing so many jobs in. More jobs, more people, it puts more strain on it. So because of that, for me, the housing crisis and, and solving that supply and demand, getting the prices in check, and also making sure that we have all types of mixed housing in all types of communities. Every district in Greensboro should look like all of Greensboro. Every district in Greensboro should look like all of Greensboro with all the amenities and all the accoutrements. That's my focus.
All right, Ms. Crawford.
Yes, so we have Road to 10,000 right now here in Greensboro. One of the things that I like to uplift is the fact that if we don't strengthen code enforcement and keep people in their homes and hold these landlords accountable, we're never gonna make 10,000 new units. We're gonna keep losing the ones that we already have that keep people in, in affordable housing. With that being said, we do need to build new houses. We need to build new units. But these units need to be in neighborhoods that already have the infrastructure to hold the new builds. And so that means, as the person running for District Two, all of our affordable housing cannot be built in our district. It needs to be in places that can, that can hold that. Also, I want to make sure that as the Greenway is being built, that we look at how we can make sure that historically black communities do not get displaced, that we will also be able to enjoy the brand-new Greenway.
Mr. Allen.
So my first year on council, I am gonna focus on inviting you to be closer to the process because I think that it's essential for us to get our community involved. And the, right now, you can look at the early voting numbers and see that we are in desperate need of organization, and we are in desperate need of you, your skills and your talents. So I have a vision of rebuilding the Neighborhood Congress across the city so that we can all work together on issues on a consistent basis. And that's how we can build the relationships and the trust with each other so that we can do the hard things as well as the easy things.
Mr. Hawkins.
My focus primarily will be upon innovation. A think tank comprised of our traditional students of the seven institutions of higher learning in the triad. We need to utilize that creativity, imagination, and the intellect that has to be tapped and unleashed rather than disregarded. While change is good, innovation is our future forward.
Mr. Ignak.
Thank you. I, when I started this process, I want the total, total community to be able to... So when I started this process, I sent out my own survey. I want to listen to the people who live in this community, not just in my district, but everybody. And the responses were very similar to a lot of the things that we have heard. But one of the ones on top was rising cost of living and property taxes. We want to make sure that we address that. The other one was worry about crime and break-ins. Some of them said speeding and unsafe streets are also a top concern. And some of them are frustrated with the new development changing existing neighborhoods. So we have to make sure that when we introduce new houses and new opportunities into the area to make sure that they are fit, fitting into where they are. We don't want something that totally is outside. And then lastly, city services like trash pickup and leaf collection, that was also another opportunity that we can improve everything on.
Ms. Walker.
Last year, the city council spent $751 million overall, $390 million, which was said to go to infrastructural development, and District Two has simply not seen the impact of that. We need to look at and examine that. We need to examine the so-called success of downtown and what's happened there. There's a community, District Two portion of that community is directly adjacent to downtown. Again, has not seen the fruits of that success. And we need to turn the city manager's proposal for the Road to 10,000 inside out to make sure that a single district is not carrying the burden of a concentration of poverty that's in, that, that's dealt with by affordable housing.
Ms. Roth.
Thank you. As you can see, there's a lot for us to do. Something I'm really focused on is once the new council is actually elected, but even before we are seated, is us to come together and, and agree on a five-point action plan, a place that we're gonna get started. Because if we don't have the direction of where we're going, we're not gonna get there. And I think that is one of the first things we should do. I also think that we really need to think about and look at places like Seattle, and maybe even go visit there where Boeing is, and which has a representation and footprint similar to Jet Zero. We should go to Louisville, in a town outside of there that has Toyota or a Toyota plant, and see what has transition and transformation looked like for them. What are the things that didn't work? Because if anything, I think that we need to ensure that we are taking advantage of the opportunity or the risk that is right in front of us for all of our communities. And, and what we do know is those that are under-invested remain under-invested if we don't do that. So we have to take those steps now.
Ms. Franklin.
What we know is that at a national level, there's a lot of turmoil, and we're going to have to steady ourselves at the local level. And so my, my mandate for the first 12 months is to create and execute on a plan for the city. My background is strategy, corporate strategy and management consulting. And a lot of times, you gotta know where to start, but, and then you gotta get started. And I think historically, our city council has been great at planning and looking and probing, but they've not been great at getting started. And what I want to get started on is, number one, quality of life. I, I grew up in East Greensboro, and growing, going back there now is, is heartbreaking. Randman Road used to rival battleground. And now, it just looks desolate. A lot of that has to do with gaps in infrastructure, which is the other thing I would want to tackle. Code enforcement, someone mentioned, that is an issue, and we need to get that put in place. And then lastly, I want to tackle jobs and, and actually reaching corporations who can hire here and retain young people. Thank you.
Mr. McKinney.
Yeah, so in the first 12 months, obviously, housing is an issue across this country. And it certainly is one here with 50,000 houses shortage. Greensboro's not creating any more land. And so how do we get there? In my first 12 months, it will be to collaborate with the new council, to come up with a plan. And we have to have a ma, a master plan where we prioritize our infrastructure, our housing. And how do we get there? And what's, what's the master plan? And so with that, in addition to that, economic development. As CEO of Piedmont Business Capital, we all know that small businesses are the backbone of our economy. I work with small businesses, funding small businesses. And with all the growth that we're experiencing with Jet Zero, Honda Jet, Toyota Battery Plant, small businesses need to be able to participate in that. Inclusive economic growth is one of my priorities. Infrastructure, housing, inclusive economic growth, and as we continue to grow, public safety. As you know, with growth, influx of people and businesses, crime continue to grow. So we need to look at crime prevention. We need to be proactive and not reactive. That means having community intervention programs that the city will fund to hire, X offenders. I'm sorry, my time's out. Thank you.
Ms. Parker.
During this time, our resources and our rights are being rolled back. And so it is critical that we take this time to work across systems and levels of governance. I, I, in the first 12 months, would like to move away from the hands-off approach to building with, right now, we're not meeting with the state. And we're not meeting with Guilford County Schools. And Guilford County Schools is our largest, one of our largest employers historically. And so I think that not only is education one of the top priorities in District Three and across the city, but it's an economic engine. It, it does support our missing middles, our teachers. And I still, I, I think that we have to, there is an absence, y'all, in District Three of governance, authentic representation, and engagement. Three of governance, authentic representation, and engagement. And I really think we have to strengthen, um, our c- communication with our neighborhoods. District Three is bigger than downtown and we deserve to design what is happening in our cities. And so firstly, very simply, town halls. That would be great. Uh, we have this time right now that we can be proactive in designing our communities. We can create pattern books right now, engaging our neighbors, and they get to choose what is happening in our cities. Um, so I'd also just like to say that my strength... Okay, thanks, y'all.
Wait a second, I'm confused. Was her time up?
My mic was down.
Okay. Let me know next time, too. Okay, thank you. Okay, Zach Matheny.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. You're right, by the way. This is very well professionally done. Uh, it's probably the best microphones and, and visual that I've ever seen in about 20 years. So congrats to you and Reverend Drumright. I, you know, the first 12 months, um, I'm gonna go back to what I've done the last 20 years. It's not about what I wanna do. It's about what needs to be done throughout the community, throughout the whole city, not just District Three. District Three may elect me, but District Three doesn't need as much as everybody else does. And so what I would focus on is the same thing I've been focused on this term, which is, we gotta have more jobs. We can't sit, steal. The jobs that we got today happened the last 15 years. You've heard the road to 10,000, housing. How can we make it correctly done? A safe city. Collaboration, listening, and taking it to problem solving. This city ain't about Zach Matheny, it's about you. And let's get that over the finish line. And I'm all for un-sheltered jobs to need base healthcare.
Smith.
Thank you. My first priority is to fast-track the building process in the city of Greensboro. I've talked to a number of builders here in Greensboro. They're telling me it takes six to seven years from the time they have conception to the time they can house someone in a house. If we don't fast-track the building process, nobody's gonna build in Greensboro. So fast-track to building, for builders in Greensboro that wanna build in Greensboro, is my first priority. My second priority is hiring good, qualified police officers, fixing the potholes in the streets, fixing the street lights, fixing the homes, fixing everything. We've got so many things we need to fix in Greensboro, it's been a leftover. My third thing is I wanna help small business. I'm a small business owner and I've never been felt, I've never felt welcome in the city of Greensboro. Big corporations are brought into Greensboro, but small businesses are being ignored. We need to give small business owners that have five or six, or even three employees, an opportunity to grow to be a bigger business. And most importantly, the last thing before my time is out, I wanna listen to the current concerns.
Time's up.
Can I finish that sentence?
Give 'em the microphone.
Okay.
Put that microphone down.
Please.
Put that microphone down. Mr. Cummings.
Pretty please.
Mr. Cummings.
I think Dr. Spencer, I'd be remiss if I didn't first give honor to the shepherd of this flock, uh, Reverend Drumright. I'd also be remiss, we learned before we came here, that one of our other fellow candidates, Dr. Akir Khan, had a death in his family. I would ask that we keep him in our prayers, uh, and we pray for his family and his family's strength. I'd be remiss if I didn't do that. Real quickly, in the 30 seconds that I have, the first thing I'm gonna do, and you can tell that Urban and I are from the great James B. Dudley High School, 'cause we, we think alike, is, we have to return this government back to the people that it was supposed to serve. There is a, where, where, we've been known as the gateway city, but somewhere along the lines, we became the gated city where we are blocked from having access with government. We're blocked from capital. We're blocked from opportunity. If the p- if the government doesn't work for the people, that is a government that cannot stand it. That's the first thing. The second...
Time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Spencer.
You're welcome, baby. Mr. Fuzaweta.
Thank you. So I want to make sure that I can get everything in. So I first wanna thank Reverend Drumright and everyone else who has, this has been amazing so far. So what I want to do is what everyone has already talked about, of course. But I'm always, public safety, infrastructure, economic development, but here's what I'm gonna do as mayor. I'm gonna break it down into quarters. My first quarter, I'm gonna spend time one-on-one with each council member because we need to come and be united as a team. And only three or four of us can meet together. We can't have five or more in a room. So I want to meet with each and every one of them. And then I want to come back that second quarter. And I want to come back and see how we can all move together to get the public safety, the housing, the infrastructure, all the housing we need, take care of our homeless. We need all of these things. Third quarter, we're...
That's it. Oops. Thank you. Robbie Perkins.
You know, I love the energy in this room. It's, it's just great. It's just great. You know, my, I've been ma- I've been mayor before. And it was the most fun job I've ever had. And it's my job, when I get to be mayor again, is to bring this city together, 'cause we are better if we move as one. Now, I've been mayor before, so I understand that I can't do anything as mayor without four other council members joining me. And I, my thing will start November 5th, the day after election. I'm not waiting a quarter, I'm not waiting six months. I'm calling all eight of the folks that get elected on November 4th and say, "Give me a list of your top five priorities." And we're gonna shake it out and we're gonna see which ones we can do together quickly. And then we're gonna get with our manager and say, "Manager, can you tell us how we're gonna do that on our first meeting together in December?"
Thank you. Brother Drumright, I heard my first dig. Can you throw that card up and explain what we gonna do when we hear people digging on other people?
Absolutely. But before I do that, I wanna acknowledge some of our esteemed public servants that are in the room. I see Senator Gladys Robinson in the room.
Stan.
Longtime community leader and our state senator. I see the Honorable Kim Erby in the room, who serves on the school board. Thank you for your service. Are there any other publicly elected officials in the room? Uh, I'm sorry, um, I, Ms. Betty Jenkins, is she here? On the school board? Ms. Jenkins? Honorable Betty Jenkins, school board. Also, we do wanna keep Dr. Akir Khan, uh, in your prayers, just to, not too long ago, he learned of a sudden loss of a family member and therefore he could not be here. So this card...
Wait a second.
Yes.
Brother Drumright, I understand we have some elected judges in the house that...
Oh, I didn't know that.
They shy. Can my elected judges, if you was elected, stand up, please?
Oh, wow!
They shy.
I, I know one by face, Tiawana Hayes.
No, wait a second. Can we get our names?
Please.
Please?
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Superior Court Judge Tanya Cutts.
Okay, and our next one?
Good evening, everyone. I am District Court Judge Angela Paulston.
All right. Everyone doesn't know everybody. So that's why we like to say our names, so that we can put a face with a name. Okay? All right.
So this is the clock it card. This is, as you can see by the hands going up in the room, this is a colloquialism, um, right now making its wave of impact, um, in social spaces where if perhaps someone says something that is not directly in line with all the facts, or in this setting, if we wanna have a little friendly, non-adversarial debate, each candidate has been supplied with only two opportunities to clock that. Use 'em wisely.
And the word is friendly. Okay, we're gonna move on. I hope y'all got that. We not gonna repeat it again, we just gonna cut your mic off if you not friendly. Everybody say friendly.
Friendly!
There we go. Our host organizer conducted street surveys and two pre-summit symposiums to churn out issues from the perspectives of Greensboro's youngest voting block, 18 to 25, and middle voting block, 26 to 40, that have committed to voting. You have two minutes to expound on these issues. And I'm gonna start on this end, Mr. Smith, since I took some, you said I, I didn't say please. Would you please answer this question?
And I will not use my four-two minutes.
Okay. Now, don't start talking, 'cause I'm getting ready to take your minutes. Before the question. Food deserts. Are there incentives available for local farmers, co-ops, or small businesses to sell fresh food in underserved areas? Are there incentives available for local farmers, co-ops, or small businesses to sell fresh food in underserved areas? Your time starts now.
Is that a question? Or is that a statement?
Again. Are there...
I do not know the answer to your question, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
But I will use my two minutes for something else.
No, you won't.
I can't.
I know. That's my question, and I'm sticking to it.
Okay.
Okay, so you gonna pass the mic?
I'm gonna pass the mic.
Okay. Zach Matheny. Are there incentives? Now, I shouldn't have to repeat this. You, you been on council long enough to know the answer.
The other thing I have, a question, you said farmers, co-ops, and what else?
Small businesses.
I think there could be for small businesses, but I think that what we could do is probably create some new, uh, initiatives to make things like that happen. For example, when I ran the Economic Development Committee for the city in my previous terms, we created two initiatives. The shovel-ready site program, which created jobs in East Greensboro, uh, in two ways, as well as we created, um, the 80-for-8 program, which was designed for East Greensboro. And so I think by pulling us together, as was said earlier, and if you listen to each other and figure it out, what is needed, where it is needed, you can create new and better incentive policies. That's what needs to be done.
Okay. Ms. Parker. Are there incentives available for local farmers, co-ops, and small businesses to sell fresh food in underserved areas?
Well, I wanna illuminate the fact that the South Side has waited decades to address, uh, any of that food justice issues. We haven't had a grocery store. We're still fighting for a grocery store, and it is underneath the incumbent's watch if that happened. Uh, I do wanna say, when we think about deserts, y'all, food deserts, our health deserts, our education deserts, they are just deserts. And so I would like us to think about things of why thing, why are there concentrations of need, concentrations of poverty? That is by design. That means that someone, uh, made the decision to deprioritize and extract fi- historically disenfranchised areas. And so when we think about food justice, y'all, we have to think about how all of these social ills all are conflated in one area. So it is urgent that we start thinking about things in, at its intersections. Because again, a food desert is a health desert, is an education desert, they are just deserts by design. And we can do that and undo that.
We had our first little meme go up in the air. Do we wanna address that now? Please, Mr. Matheny, this is...
And I can take 57 seconds if you want me to. Basically, you know, I, I get that there's gonna be shade thrown at the incumbent, doesn't have to be like that. I actually tried to attend a meeting and I got asked to leave, uh, even though RSVP'd. I'll tell you this, if you wanna pinpoint one person on this council and blame everything on them, that's not the right thing. It's as it was said, it takes five of us. Second of all, I do think in two cases in the South Side, the city, the community, overpromised and didn't deliver. And that was the proposed lead-all site, the city staff said was gonna happen and didn't happen. Now, you wanna blame that on one person, go ahead. But it ain't the truth. You wanna start getting some things done? Let's work together and let's get the truth and take talking to problem solving. The second one was the city council, while I was not elected, gave significant incentives to Piggly Wiggly to locate in East Greensboro in the South Side. That never came through fruition. Why? Don't yell at one person. Yell at the mountaintop. Let's pull together and get some things done. That's how we're gonna get it done.
All right, Mr. McKinney. Are there incentives available for local farmers, co-ops, and small businesses to sell fresh food in underserved areas?
Yes. I believe there are federal grants, uh, there are loans, uh, there's tax credits, there's tax abatements. I mean, and I, I can't see him go into detail about them, but there are incentives. And then local municipalities can vote to offer additional incentives.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin, same question.
From what I understand, there are USDA incentives. There are also other state-level incentives to, to attract, um, new types of food providers, fresh food providers, to food deserts. You know, I'd also like to say that we need to create our own city-led incentives, especially around growing fresh foods and, um, supporting certain types of community-led co-ops. I actually was a member of the Fort Greene, um, food co-op, uh, in Brooklyn, New York for a number of years. It was a member-led co-op and it was a wonderful resource for my community, which included a lot of artists and a lot of other peo- working-class people who did not have funds for, you know, the, the bigger grocery stores and fresher foods. Um, we worked collectively, uh, we, um, actually donated a certain amount of time, uh, every month. It was a requirement for membership, uh, and we were able to provide fru- um, fresh fruits and vegetables and other things to the entire community at a discounted price. So I think that we, yes, the, to answer the question, there are incentives out there, uh, and I'd love to see the city provide even more.
Ms. Roth.
Uh, yes, they, the, my counterparts are correct. There are incentives that are available. Um, and actually, though, I think about projects like the co-op at Bessemer Center that I had a chance to work on as city manager. I know that it's not there any longer. Also, thinking about the, uh, grocery stores that have looked at developing in some of our, uh, food desert areas, it really is incumbent upon us to really start at the beginning. What didn't work? Why didn't it work? And learn from that. There, there is a lot of things that we need to do and there is a lot of discussions about ideas. I think that's great. What's even better and where I really focus is on execution. We have got to move away from and move beyond the discussions and we have to try what we don't know. You know? And if it's not working, then try something else. But it is really time, and especially at this moment in time, we have a very short horizon of opportunity here that we have to take advantage of. And I'm going to keep coming back to that. And so for me, what it looks like is being clear on what didn't work, understanding where opportunities look like, understanding what others have tried and, and maybe have failed, and, and then iterating from there. But I do think that there are, actually, I know that there are incentives that are available. There are strategies that we can deploy. Sometimes they actually, um, are ways to activate abandoned buildings as well. You can actually use floors in abandoned buildings to create indoor, uh, farming opportunities. So that, there's a lot of answers that we can figure out. But the point is, is being focused on action and execution.
Ms. Walker.
I was, I attended a, a farmer's market that was sponsored by Protestant Baptist Church, I think a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, I wanna say that these alternatives, uh, farmer's markets and incentives, as all of my colleagues have said here, do exist. The problem is, is that they are important, they, they are meaningful, they're good, but they're never gonna solve the problem of food deserts. Here's the deal, is that what we offer poor communities, and particularly communities of color, we're always looking for alternatives. We need a grocery store in these communities. And running in farmer's markets is not the solution. It's helpful, it's assistive, but it does not solve that problem. Housing is again, critical and key and connected to why there are insufficient and inadequate retailers who are interested in locating their grocery stores to District One and District Two. How you diagnose the problem, again, is how you treat it. And so what we're doing right now is we continue to not deal with the issue of power, the issue of equity, the issue of all the things that are meaningful to deliver to these communities. And so again, I just wanna make sure that we understand, we need both and, and not either are. We often operate in binary arrangements. And that won't serve the problem in communities like District Two. And so again, I say, let's diagnose this problem, let's look at the long-term solutions, let's look at its connectedness to all of our systems. Housing, healthcare, uh, uh, wealth, all of those things are connected. And we've got to be far more comprehensive and intentional about how we're evaluating needs in order that the way that we began to deliver a solution makes sense.
Thank you. Mr. Ignat.
Thank you. It's kind of hard to follow a lot of good ideas already, but I would think it would help if we have offered zoning changes or subsidies to offer full supermarkets, full-service supermarkets. Also, to use public and private partnerships with grocers who commit to launch long-term presence and promote cooperative grocery stores owned by the community. So all of these also are going to be helping to work against food deserts.
Mr. Hawkins.
Tax credits for food retailers may be predicated on the city to expand opportunity zones. To answer your question directly, are there that can be created? The opportunity zone question, the city needs to dissect the federal tax laws, because at the end of the day, a number of those that were in place are now being rolled back by the present presidential administration. Right, exactly. Now, we, as the future city council, must seek means residents in those food deserts, an opportunity to not only survive, but become sustainable and thrive.
Mr. Allen.
So obviously, there are incentives that are available, and we've seen them used in plenty of other avenues to bring businesses to the city, to bring other amenities to the city. So there are things available. Are they being used for those purposes? No, not right now. So what we have to do is address the culture. It's great to have plans, it's great to have ideas and want to implement things, but we have to address a culture that's deep-rooted, that leads to the things that we're talking about. So I do agree with Ms. Walker, when we have to face those undergirded historic trends that we've seen that have led to the communities that we lived in, because they didn't grow out the ground. And we also have to acknowledge that there are economic incentives for things to be the way that they are now. And so we have to come together, and we have to organize, we have to build relationships, and we have to grow so that we can invest in the businesses and retain the young talent from all of our colleges and universities around the town. We can use our incentives, just like we do with firefighters and police officers. We can try to offer students who are graduating opportunities where they can stay in the city. So we do have programs available, but are they being used? And does your leadership have the boldness to take that first step to do it? I would submit to you that I do, and I will.
Crawford.
Yes, so firstly, as someone who is at the farmer's market every Saturday morning, with a mother who owns a small business, a retired black woman who is struggling to bake and provide for the community in healthy ways, I know that we do need to continue to keep our farmer's markets open and available. It is right around the corner from A&amp;T. We see students using the farmer's market to come and get fresh fruits and vegetables. We have farmers there. When we're talking about incentives and what's happening at the federal level, we do know that the USDA and SNAP benefits have been cut. And so there are produce tokens that people get that they can come in and only use for the farmers. The farmers depend on the SNAP and the produce tokens. So if we are not able to find ways to supplement, and it's gonna fall on the city, and it's gonna fall on the county, if we don't find ways to supplement what people are using to buy that fresh produce, one, the families that are not gonna be able to get this healthy and nutritious food is going to be detrimental on our health system and every system inside of District Two and District One. But also, it is gonna hurt our farmers. How many people know that right now, farmers are suing this administration? Right? If y'all know anything about J.D. Vance, he is buying up farmers that are going out of business, and we will not have any fresh fruits and vegetables that we control ourselves. And so we need to make sure that when we're talking about incentives, there's none coming from the federal level, y'all. We got to be the people that save ourselves, and so we're gonna have to figure out at the city level, how do we offer these farmers incentives to stay? And secondly, when we're talking about small businesses, a lot of the places that people go with their proposals for money have white faces, I'm sorry.
That's it. Ms. Crawford, Ms. Crawford, thank you. Hugh Holston.
Thank you very much. To answer the question, no, the city does not have incentives. There may be incentives available from the state and the federal. But also, let's also talk about the food insecurity and the need for these types of markets. It is a temporary fix. East and Northeast and Southeast Greensboro are in a food desert and have been for a while. We need longer-term solutions. Until we get there, though, we need some shorter-term solutions and some shorter-term, healthier solutions, and this could solve the problem. I had a conversation about two weeks ago with Chancellor James R. Martin at North Carolina A&amp;T, and I posed this very same question to him, because we talked about the food insecurity and North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University, that A, there's a farm out there. There's students there who are farming, who are learning the trade, learning the education, learning the science behind it all. We could use A&amp;T and their students for the benefit of our community. And also for the benefit of their training. It's a win-win for everyone. Now, again, still, it's one piece, it's one tool, but that's one way that we could begin to address the food insecurity by leveraging the great North Carolina Agricultural and Technical State University.
I say food is my space, because this is where I've been in for the past 10 or 15 years, addressing food. So does the city officially have an incentive program for fresh produce, what the question asks? No, we don't. But are there opportunities for food production to happen in our city? Yes. An example of that is, I happen to sit on the board for the Greensboro Farmer's Market. So again, that allows local farmers to be able to come in and be able to sell their food at our farmer's market. That facility where our farmers are doing that is actually a city-owned facility. So that's a non-traditional way. Then when we look at what the city is also doing in our neighborhoods, so when you look at the four corridors, because again, when you look at our city, and most cities have a skyline you can see, we don't have that here in Greensboro. What we do is have portals to our city. And so with that, we are doing investments. So again, non-traditional ways in how we can provide investments for others to be able to come in and look at this. So it can be small, it can be large. And where we're going in the future, you're not gonna see your big box grocery store. So we need to think differently about how we are addressing food insecurity in our communities, and how do we look at it from a small business entrepreneur standpoint? Because if you look at small businesses, if you were to go into a bank, a small business, when they look at being able to provide funding, it has to be about $5 million that your business is doing. And if we're really talking about circulating the dollars in our communities, it's gonna be less than $5 million. So how are we looking at the whole spectrum of how we're addressing food? And then I would take it further with looking at some of the other ways we can look at incentives to be able to get fresh food production in our city. There's many buildings and opportunities that we can reimagine, and we can look at what they're doing in High Point. When I look at what some of the things they're doing in High Point to be able to address some of the food insecurity around fresh produce, we can take some of the stuff that they're doing, and how can we integrate that here? So again, when I look at how we're addressing fresh produce and food in our community, it's looking at both ands, so public-private partnerships, it's looking at our county and our city to be able to do this. But then, most importantly, we have to also...
That's it. Thank you. Next one, Mr. Key. Thank you.
I have to agree with Zach. It's not one person's fault. It's a collective failure of the entire council. And when I was on council, we were number one in the country in food deserts. Now, I think we're somewhere around number nine, which is still too high. And also, when I was on council, we redeveloped a shopping center on Phillips Avenue called the Renaissance Shops. It was a dilapidated shopping center for 17 years prior to my coming on council, and we had a beautiful co-op grocery store there, if you remember. But it failed. Why did it fail? Because they did not go with the system that we had in place, where the citizens would own 49% of the shopping center, and they could have leased to the co-op at a dollar a month until the co-op built up the revenues. But they elected not to do that and give it to a group out of Durham that owns the shopping center now. And this group out of Durham charged top dollar right from the start. So the co-op couldn't, they had high prices for the neighborhood, so the neighborhood couldn't afford the food, and so they only last a short time. And so what I am proposing is that $120 million Economic Development Fund be used for food deserts also. And as a developer, I am building 144 units off of 16th Street across from Walmart, and we're gonna have a commercial urban farm on that site. And we have to, we have to be creative when it comes to addressing these food deserts. We have to employ and give developers and farmers and just regular citizens opportunities to get funding to grow food, because food is a major issue, not only in Greensboro, but everywhere. Everyone has to eat. And so...
Thank you. Ms. Black.
I think that I want to start with just addressing how food deserts are established. Housing is the reason why we don't have grocery stores in our communities. When we have council that continues to concentrate poverty, the rooftop incomes start to decrease, and grocery stores pull out. That's the formula. That's it. So the council that we have, when they are voting to put affordable housing concentrated in District One and Two, you will find that the grocery stores pull out. It's not a secret. It's not a secret. So we have to reimagine how we're developing our communities, for one. That's how we start addressing the food source. Second, everybody doesn't want to be a farmer. So I'm a master gardener. Gardening is hard. And so I don't think that everyone wants to grow their own food. This idea that underserved communities have to grow their way out of eating food is just not reasonable. I also think that we do need to reimagine where we access food. Accessing food doesn't mean that a big-box grocery store decides, this is getting ready to expire, so we'll put it in a box, and we'll send it to the community where they can get in their cars and get in line and grab those boxes and go. That is not food security. And so when we are looking at how they are serving our communities and providing food, there are tax write-offs that are happening on top of that. That's not surviving, and that's not thriving. The other thing that I want to say is that I grew up with a Bessemer Curve Market, and I know collard greens on Thanksgiving at my mama's house came from Bessemer Curve Market. We have to start reimagining where we access food. It does not have to be a Walmart, it does not have to be a Food Lion, but it has to be a viable market in our communities that serves us well. That's what we need to see as far as addressing food security. Thank you.
Tammy Thorne.
Crystal made a point for me in terms of the housing, and it starts with the housing, how we build housing, where we build housing, and how we tend to concentrate affordable housing. I would like to say that that also happens in District Five. It's not just District One and Two. It also happens in the southern part of District Five. I also want to comment on the suggestion of the $120 million Economic Development Fund. And while I think it's a wonderful idea to help us incentivize grocery stores, we also have to make sure that whatever we do in terms of incentives does not cost the taxpayer and the people that are currently living in our community additional tax dollars, where we've got to be focused on making sure that people can afford to stay in their homes. So how do you do it? It's a multi-multi-prong approach. I think we could be doing it better. Yes, I think we could be offering some city incentives and partnering with our state on that as well. I think it's gonna be an all-hands-on-deck approach.
Thank you. And Jim Key threw his card up in the air. Jim, do you want to get the mic, please?
Yes, I agree with Tammy. We cannot burden the citizens with more tax dollars, but we have to look at the budget and see where there's fat, and we have to do some trimming. And there are companies that loan municipalities money, long-term, lots of money. We can utilize those companies. They can come in and loan Greensboro money at 3%, and we can turn around and loan money to the farmers or developers or whoever at 5%, and that extra 2% will pay off the loan. So I agree with you, Tammy. We can't burden the citizens.
Okay. Now, this is what we're gonna, mayors that are running for, y'all not gonna answer that question. I got a whole nother question for you. And then after the mayors, get this, the folks running for mayor gets this question, they get two minutes. Then we're gonna all go to one minute on the next questions. And the next questions, everybody, I needed everybody in that running for city council to answer one question that sounded the same, so that the audience can hear how you think. Now, you will each get different, you might get the same question, you might get different questions. I got a whole lot of questions. And we're gonna get through as many as humanly possible, and so you're gonna have to think, okay? And answer your constituents. Am I good?
Yes. You're doing, she's doing an excellent job. We're gonna keep going, and we're gonna pack it in. Our first question, Dr. Spencer, is from the streets.
Yes.
We have a question from the street.
And we want this to our mayoral candidates.
What would you like to see from your next mayor or city council member? What matters to you?
Environmental sustainability, so letting companies, but also making sure that those companies are keeping the environment clean, but also proper education for the individuals in the area.
I think we need more protection around campus, I would say, especially the stuff that happened with, you know, Charlie Kirk.
I would say, thinking about like improving a lot of like infrastructure.
I would say more help for people who do not have homes, who live on the streets.
I think I would love to see some justice for underrepresented populations in Greensboro. Just, we need more equality. Even with as much progress as America has made as a nation, we still got a lot of problems that we need to fix. Like, we still got a bunch of racial inequality, gender inequality. It's just, we need to do better.
I want more of a open-minded perspective, right? When it comes to all sorts of people, all different mindsets, all different, you know, races, all the things, right? I think there's a disconnect, for sure, right there. Religions, all of that. There's a huge disconnect going on right now.
From UNCG and A&amp;T, and that's what they want to see from our next mayor. So would you all kindly respond to these questions from students? Or these concerns, rather?
I think they lost the question, because he never repeated it.
Right.
So the question was...
The concerns. There wasn't a question, I'm sorry, for clarity. Those concerns from those students on our, on a couple of our campuses.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. You know, when you listen to the students' concerns, you've got a lot of commonality. And in order to make this one Greensboro, bringing us all together, we've got to listen to each other. That's gonna be the start. Now, what I hear across this community, because I've been talking to a lot of people, is that we all like new jobs coming in, good-paying jobs. We all like economic development. We all are in agreement, we need lots more housing, and we're struggling over public safety, because frankly, it's a tale of two cities. One side wants one, one side wants something else. We gotta figure that out, and that's pretty complicated. But what I've noticed is that our citizens want us to do something to make this community better. Now, I was gonna answer the last question with this. This is a report that I worked on when I was a city council member... This is a report that I worked on when I was a city council member in 2010 and 11. And it's a parody study about East Greensboro. And what it says is that East Greensboro spends a lot of money. They spend it in East Greensboro because they can't get out. They spend it in East Greensboro, and they don't have a lot of services that they have in other parts of the city because they don't have a good north-south transportation structure. And this study has been sitting on the shelf since December 7th of 2011. The guy that did this study went to United States Naval Academy. He got a master's from Wharton School of Business. This is his picture. And today, he is in charge of real estate for North America for a little bitty company called Google. Let's pull it off the shelf and get it done.
Thank you. I'm going to address specifically what the students were concerned about. They were first concerned about sustainability. As liaison of the Community Sustainability Council, I can tell you that we are concerned as well, and we are moving forward. We are applying for those grants for food deserts. We are applying for those grants to make sure that small businesses can be sustainable. We applied for and received tree preservation grants. We have done all of those things. So I heard sustainability. Then I heard protection. Yes, we need public safety. We need public safety with police officers, not only police officers, we also need fire department safety. So we need to continue supporting and advocating and making sure that all of those have the proper salaries so we can be safe in our homes every night. I heard about infrastructure. The Urban Loop has opened up acres and acres of land. You know why? My committee, the MPO, the TAC, I'm chair of that committee, we made the final vote on that before it went to council to make sure that we could receive those federal grants and receive those state grants. And then Greensboro only had to put in like 10%. Otherwise, we would have never finished it. So my my staff, the staff of the MPO, got those grants. Let's talk about justice. Yes, we need justice. We need to listen to every student. I have built relationships with students at A and T, UNCG. I mentor groups at A and T. My Kiwanis Club has a club at A and T. And I am their advisor, and I spoke to two, three, four sorority groups. I've already done all that. It's all about building those relationships. My microphone went out.
Thank you. My microphone went out. I'm sorry to yell.
That's okay. I had 10 more seconds.
Okay. Mr. Cummings? Okay, I got a whole wire up here. What's happening? Okay. Mr. Cummings?
Thank you for that question. First, let me say that at some point, when you ask yourself, what is the definition of insanity? We remind ourselves that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing, but expecting a different result. So why would we keep on electing the same council and expecting a different result? When I defy you to go back to the last campaigns and ask yourself, were these people telling you, were they promising you that they were going to do in the last four years what they're promising that they're going to do in these first, these next four years? It is time to turn the page, and that's why I'm so happy to be here with this group. Because this is the new generation of leadership. And this city needs a new era of bold leadership with people who are designed to think differently than what has been done in the last decades and the last years. I mean, for God's sake, Mr. Perkins, who I respect, just told us, let's go look at a a a report from 2010. Well, answers that worked in 2010 work in 2025. They just won't. There's time for a change of things. The last thing I would say is this, the way that you start, the way that you start to change things is show people that you respect them. And how can we say to the people of East Greensboro, we respect them, when there's a dangerous park sitting over there on English Street, that when this council had the ability to remove all, all of the tainted soil over there, it said that, no, we are going to cap it and leave it there, but we care about you. I don't know how that works to y'all, but if you're going to leave something that's going to kill my kids, I don't think that you really care about me. That's going to be one of the first things that we do is bringing people to tell you the truth about what the city has been lagging for you. We are going to get that dangerous soil from over there on Bingham Park under a Mayor Mark administration.
Can y'all hear me? Because I can't hear me. I can't do, okay, there we go. Y'all know I love a microphone and I know how to use it. All right, now let me tell you what's happening up front for the folk in the back. First of all, somebody tapped me and told me, and I thought your time was up, Mary Kay, but they were telling me that my microphone was dying. So you got, how many seconds? You got 10 seconds left on that last question, okay? Then, after you finish, you threw up your clock. You threw up both of them? You, you, okay. So she's going to get to rebuttal to Mr. Cummings. Then, after she threw hers up, Mr. Perkins threw his up. So you got it going on, Brother Cummings. You done made them using their stuff. So let me, let me, let me go ahead and get Ms. Boozerwader her 10 seconds. And the next time y'all want to tap me, somebody let me know what you tapping me for, okay? Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Boozerwader.
Thank you so very much. So I was going to finish up by saying it's about the relationships you build. We must build those relationships with our young people. I I really believe that that is the way
10 seconds. That was it. That was it. I'm sorry.
It's done?
Yes.
Bye.
It is. It's done. I'm sorry. Woo, now you get to talk about your card. The card number one, go ahead.
So the issue is, everybody, or at least a couple of the people who have spoken, want to get rid of everyone on council. So what we have here is where we have nothing to continue the continuity of the trajectory of success we are experiencing right now. Have you ever known Greensboro to have all of these companies wanting to come here? And you know what? When they come here, the small businesses will thrive. When they come here, they will be required to give back to their community and can help fund some of these areas that, you know, with farmers and with curb markets that have fresh produce. They can be tapped to do those things, but we have to work with them. And we need someone to lead our city who has the institutional knowledge of how we got to this point. Because if we don't know how we got to this point, we can't continue the trajectory of success. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, you threw a second card up, but I'm gonna let Brother Perkins, he threw his card up, and then you can come back with your card. Okay, is that how we play Uno? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Perk. Oh, no, wait a minute, Jim. You not getting in this. You just put that card right on down. Go ahead, Mr. Perkins. Jim, we got Jim throwing up a card. Thank you.
Needs to use the restroom, so we're going to
Oh, well, we're going to make that a major announcement. Ms. Franklin. See, this is what happens when you come to family. This is how family do. Am I right? Okay, Ms. Franklin, they throwing up cards up front, so this give you enough time, baby. Go ahead. Go ahead, Brother Perkins.
Now, I'm all messed up. You know, a couple of things. Number one, I got elected mayor in 2011 because I fought to close the landfill to municipal solid waste. So I heard what East Greensboro said, and I acted on it. And I got elected mayor because of that. Number two, this study is from 2011. And it is still valid today because what it says is East Greensboro doesn't have north-south roads to connect things. Therefore, retailers aren't coming into East Greensboro without those connections. Number three, I have huge institutional knowledge in the city of Greensboro. I was on city council for 16 years, mayor for two years. And I appointed Mrs. Boozerwader to the MPO, of which I was a chair for seven years. And also, 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 we were working on the Urban Loop for a long time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Now, you have thrown up your last card. If you really want to use that card right now, you can. You want to use it. Okay, go ahead.
So there was someone else serving on the MPO. Mayor Vaughn is the one who actually appointed me to the MPO that he is discussing. So therefore, I was going to say, what we have in Greensboro are so many ways to get transit going. You know, they cut off Murrow Boulevard. You remember, they cut off Murrow Boulevard so it couldn't go through. But yes, what we are doing right now is trying to make sure that every area has transportation to get to that area. As chair of the Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation, we are looking at just that. How we can combine routes with GTA. How we can all work together so everyone can have the transportation that they need. Also, it's a mayor's job to stay up on the news and to gather every bit of information they can. The Piggly Wiggly is opening on Freeman Mill Road by Thanksgiving. So we, we've started something, and others will follow. Others will follow now because they can see that it's going to be vibrant and taken care of. Thank you.
Time. Dexter McCoy. Jim, put that card down. Dexter, where is Dexter? Okay, and Dexter has a question, and we're going to take, send Dexter to the microphone. And Dexter, who are you addressing this question to? Pick one person. Because you see what's happening, right? They playing Uno with these
This is to the whole council.
To the whole council.
And mayoral candidates. Everybody.
One minute, each person gets to answer this question. Is that It's three responses. Unless they want a clock. I don't even know what this question is, so I can't help you. Go ahead, my brother.
Thank you all for being here. My name is Dexter McCoy, proud graduate of the illustrious North Carolina Agriculture and Technical State University.
And he proud.
And a proud member of the Justice for the Next Generation organization as well. In 2024, the city of Greensboro did a disparity study. This disparity study showed, and this question is framed around construction dollars spent in Greensboro, just to give you a frame of reference. Greensboro spent $377 million on construction between the years of 2019 and 2022. Only 42 million of those dollars were spent on minority women and business entrepreneurships. Only eight of the 377 million were spent on minority businesses. That is only 2% of the 17% that is available, according to the disparity study. My question is, what role do you plan to play so that major capital projects, such as the Windsor-Chavis Community Center over District Two shares like space with District One, to make sure that these major capital projects deliver the real economic benefit to the communities where they are built? If you're not aware, the $70 million Windsor-Chavis project only got 13% of its 32% goal.
Okay, we're going to start that question with Jim Key.
What's the question again? No, no, I'm just kidding.
Okay.
Well, that's one of the reasons for developing or instituting a $120 million Economic Development Fund. To ensure that minorities, churches, businesses get the funding that they need to operate their businesses and start new businesses. I sit on the Board of Trustees at North Carolina A and T. And I speak with the chancellor constantly, almost daily. And we are talking about North Carolina A and T's involvement in in community development because A and T is located in East Greensboro. And so we have a couple of major projects that we're going to be announcing pretty soon. But we're also going to get more involved in the community in terms of agriculture, business development. I'm a graduate of the School of Business and Economics. So we're going to be reaching out to help small businesses get started. So these are the plans that we have. And as the city councilman, I would like to put that in place also, the same, same
Thank you. Mr. Ignock, do you answer that, please?
I would believe that to address the situation, we would have to work with the companies and the businesses that are coming into our area. Make sure that they are hiring local people and not bringing in their own. And also to address the disparities, it would have to be a group effort. It would have to, we would have to go to those places, figure out what's what's not working and how to address it as a whole. Not just one, not just the people who are working in that district, but actually go to the actual place.
Mr. Oh, I'm sorry. Is that it?
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Thank you. You know, I work with small businesses all the time, and I think when you start talking about our MWBE department, what we have to do is to streamline and simplify the process for them to compete. Because if not, they get discouraged and they go the other way. And number two, where's the accountability? Whenever there's cost overrun, we need to make sure that the amount of those dollars that are cost overrun, that the percentage of the MWBE award should be calculated into that as well. And when we're not doing that, we're leaving out a large portion of the segment. I can't tell you how many small minority businesses that I talk to on a regular basis, even around the MWBE portion, where they are discouraged because the process for them is complicated and overwhelming. And so we got to simplify that process for our small minority businesses and women. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thurm.
Well, I think, I think part of the issue would be that I fully, or the council currently fully anticipates that probably within the next few months, we will no longer be allowed to have an MWBE program and that we will be prohibited from having that program. In anticipation of that, some of our council members have worked very hard to get approval for us to have a small business economic program to promote small businesses. That will be for all businesses. Depending on what happens there, we'll wait and see. In addition, I think one of the primary problems or a big problem that some of the minority businesses, especially the small ones, have had is centered around the bonds that the city requires and the bonding program. And I think we need to take a look at that and see what we can do to alleviate that problem.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin?
Can I get just a summarization of the the question again? I want to make sure I answer it properly.
Mr. Dexter McCoy? Thank you, baby.
A summary of the question is, what role would you as a council member play? And whether it's like direction to the selection committees and or your vote on council to ensure that large capital projects that are built in our communities benefit the communities, meaning the business owners that live there?
Large capital projects benefit the business owners. When you say, so you gave the example of Windsor Center, and I just want to probe a little bit. Benefiting, because that benefits residents, you want to see something that kind of does more for the businesses or
I work in, I work in construction.
Okay.
And so I guess what I'm saying is, to have an opportunity to work on a project in your community
Got it.
gives you capital revenue, and that process is not easy to navigate for business owners in Greensboro.
Got it.
Specifically, minority women and business entrepreneurs.
Okay, no, I love this question. So first of all, let me just tell you this. I am a minority-owned business. I'm, I am certified, A to A, in DBE with the federal government. I'm also state certified. And most recently, I'm certified with Greensboro. I love working on public sector projects. And you're right, they're, they're huge opportunities for our small businesses to grow and thrive. I love working on public sector projects, and you're right, they're huge opportunities for our small businesses to grow and thrive. I have seen the disparity research around what's going on here in Greensboro, and I do think that there needs to be more opportunity for minority-owned business. Now, where I really see the gap, where I see city council leaning in, is some of the marketing. There are amazing programs in existence, including the MWBE program. Michael leads an amazing organization that helps small businesses, and we need to give some, get some of that information out to small businesses. And I think the city council should lean in by giving opportunities to disadvantaged businesses and...
Thank you. Thank you.
Let me just finish up by saying...
Thank you. No, 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 no.
Sorry.
Okay, all right. Ms. Pender? Jim, give up the microphone.
Thank you. As a current city council member, I actually sit on the advisory, I would say the advisory council for our MWBE. And going back to what Ms. Thurman just said, it starts internal. And so internally, we had to look at what systems in place are preventing for some of these opportunities to happen. And I believe as of lately, in the past month and a half, we actually have remediated some of those processes that are getting in the way. And so with our outreach, looking at our internal systems, looking at how do we clean up our list that we have, and now we have a new list called B2G that allows us to inventory and see what minority businesses are out there. So I would continue to work on that along with other council members, because it starts internally, because we were penalizing those when our system internally wasn't really operating to operational efficiency. In addition to that, the outreach is important. So how do we work with GBL? How do we work with Try a Local First? How do we work with Piedmont Business Capital, East Greensboro now, to make sure we create the awareness?
Thank you. Thank you. What I'm going to do now is this same question, we're going to stop. We're going to ask a new question, because Zach got away from me, because we had a question for Zach. And I'm going to ask this question, and I want an answer to it, because it's important. We're going to start with Mr. Allen. With homelessness nearly 50% in Guilford County and affordable housing projects like the Regency Inn, redevelopment incomplete, how will you ensure that city resources are directed toward longer-term housing solutions and not short-term enforcement measures that fail to reduce homelessness?
That's a wonderful question. I think that we have to focus on the root causes and all of the many factors that lead to folks homelessness. So we have to keep people in their homes. We have to, I started a program called Thrive GSO, and now Thrive GSO helps with tenant mediation for folks who are at risk of losing their homes. So we have to keep people in their homes. We have to focus on long-term solutions and focus on the root problems. So we have to provide services that can help folks to find jobs, help folks with upward mobility in this city. We have to make sure that folks have affordable livable wages that they can survive in this city on, because prices are going up on everything. And so the risk of folks losing their homes, losing that sustainability, is also going up. And so we have to focus on the retention, but also we have to look to who has been most affected and how are we going to fix those issues?
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Yeah, we're too brilliant not to be able to solve this, and we have so invested and over-invested in temporary solutions to problems. We have got to come at this problem comprehensively. We've got to see it through the lens of every single one of our systems, from housing to education to the issue of infrastructure. And we've got to look at it permanently. We have become so gimmicky, and we're so driven by temporary solutions to problems or addressed to problems that we've not invested in this, looking at it comprehensively. And so I think that if we were to pull together representatives of the multiplicity of all of those systems, we can begin to figure this out. We're just too brilliant not to be able to do that, and it has to be long-term solutions over to short-term addresses.
We've got a card that's been put up in the air. Ms. Thurman?
I don't want to challenge anything that Ms. Walker just said. I want to agree with it, and I want to say that that's exactly what I have been doing, trying and finally accomplishing in finding a location for permanent supportive housing. We have, the Band-Aids help for this season, this moment, but we have got to go further upstream. We know that the longer people live on the streets and are housing insecure, the more mentally unstable and the more dangerous it is for them. With my project that I've been working on, we are this close, and I don't know who laughed about this, but this is a serious problem. I am thrilled that I was finally able to secure property in my district, because nobody else wanted it in their district, to have our first permanent supportive housing project, working with a healthcare provider to put full clinic in and begin to treat...
Thank you, Tom. Jim Key threw up his clock that. Zecilia Crawford put up her clock that. And Mr. McKinney, Ms. Franklin. So we're going to start down at Mr. Key. Go right ahead.
Thank you for asking that question. The city of Greensboro has spent $3 million plus on the Regency project, and this is currently what's on the project, a homeless shelter. But in their brilliance, they have elected to sell this property to a group out of Raleigh who pays no taxes in Greensboro for $350,000. So you do the math. Paid $3 million for it, plus you're going to sell it to a group out of Raleigh for $350,000. Now, I've got developers calling me every day, asking me, where is my $3 million? And so this is a can of worms that the city has opened up that we're going to have to close. Thank you.
Ms. Crawford? Can someone give a... Jim, stop hogging the microphone.
So we're going to have to employ the Housing First model. I've been talking about this since the last time I ran. One of the things that I do is I helped launch something called Keep Gate City Housed. And basically, what it is, is that we recognize that we cannot, there are tons of organizations that are doing work around homelessness, y'all. That is not, we don't need to be doing any more studies about that. There are plenty of people doing that. What we knew is that 16,000 households face eviction every single year, and that if we wanted to find somewhere to stop the growth of homelessness, we had to prevent evictions. And so what we did in Keep Gate City House is we went to the city council and we asked for 1.47% for rental assistance, and also we asked them to fund legal aid, which is in the courthouses that helps people mediate their evictions right then. If we get leadership that actually cares about people, we won't have to be fighting to get the money anymore.
Thank you. Our next one coming down the line. Where was my next clock at, son? Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
Yes, hi. So I wanted to address specifically the types of homelessness and the fact that each type has to be treated differently. There's two major categories. One would be, you know, the people who are lower income, who have more issues kind of maintaining their housing because of income. And we need to address that with affordable housing in smart ways. I agree with not concentrating poverty. But then the second and most critical type is homelessness is caused by serious illness and drug abuse, mental illness and addiction. And we have to be honest about what some of our homeless are going through. It's not compassionate to leave someone on the street when they have a sickness. When they, no one wants to go to the bathroom on themselves. You know, coming back to Greensboro after all these years, it was like being in New York. So we have to work tightly with the county to address some of that and help get these people the help they need.
Time. Mr. McKinney, I think you were next.
I want to start by saying homelessness is not a crime. It's a combination of housing, health and opportunity. And so, and I agree with my colleague when she said the Housing First model. Yeah, we need to get people in permanent housing first, and then we need to provide the supportive services, mental health care, substance controls treatment, job training. Because if you put them in a house and you don't provide the ancillary services, they won't stay in there long. And how are we going to do that? We've got to strengthen our public and private partnerships. That means it's not a one-off issue. It's our issue. This is a we issue. We've got to work together. So we need the faith-based community. We need nonprofits. We need to partner with organizations like Partners Ending Homelessness and Interactive Resource Centers. We need to be able to work with our healthcare providers, our private developers, and this is how we create more supportive housing permanently. So it's an us problem. It's us that's got to work together.
Ms. Parker?
Y'all, I don't know when the question turned from houselessness to, but I really wanted to address equity in the MWBE briefly. Y'all, I just want to tell y'all, the MWBE never had any teeth, and when we're talking about these social...
Ms. Parker?
I'm going to bring it back together.
No, Ms. Parker, right now I need you to bring that part first.
I don't know what the question was. I really, I raised my flag.
You did. I'm so sorry.
It's 8:30, you know?
Yeah, I know. Pass the mic. Mr. Holston?
I haven't. My clock that really is to turn to Ms. Crawford and support what she said. The reason is, is that Keep Gate City Housed came to city council. They actually came to me, and I championed it. For the past two years, I've championed $440,000 in the city budget for the purpose of keeping people in their homes. Ms. Crawford is exactly correct. There are over 16,000 households in our county and our city who are in some stage of the eviction process. When those tenants walk into eviction court, 90% of them, nine zero percent of them, have no representation. Zero, which means that when they say the wrong word or don't do the right thing at the right time, they find themselves on the street. And when you go through eviction and you find yourself on the street, getting back out of it is going to take years, if you can get back out of it. So I was very proud to support the Keep Gate City Housed. We met several times in that conversation.
Time. Thank you, Dan. I want to, I want to address, can I ask this question of the mayoral candidate? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You, as the moderator, you have the liberty to do that. I just stand because you did direct this question, or you wanted to direct this question to Mr. Matheny, and I have articulated the question to him via text, and he has responded.
Oh, please let me hear what he has to say.
And after he responds, because she's running in his district.
We would love to hear what Ms. Parker has to say.
Okay. All right. So he had to leave because he has guests from out of town and working with his kids. I just want to be clear about the question.
Thank you, Ms. Thurman. Thank you so much. We're going, we're going to answer this question, though. Thank you, though, for letting us know who's in this house.
The question, as you articulated, was around homelessness. With homelessness nearing 50% in Guilford County and affordable housing projects like the Regency Inn, redevelopment being incomplete, how will you ensure that city resources are directed towards long-term housing solutions and not short-term enforcement measures that fail the homeless population? And I quote that Mr. Matheny responds, "He has been working," I'm sorry, let me just quote him. "I have been working on that since I came back to council. This is one of my number-one initiatives. The healthcare industrial industry in Guilford County that is in charge of health and human services have to be included for that solution."
Ms. Parker, would you like to answer that, please?
Yeah, it's late, y'all. I'm going to, I'm going to read, "Homelessness is complex, like most problems. If we're not looking at the complexities and the root causes, then we will have shallow interventions approaches and quick fixes." I can tell you, y'all, we just lost millions of dollars because Zach didn't seal the deal in 10 years when it came to the region property that's on Summit. And if we're not building comprehensively, just like we invested with the mill, that didn't mean that we had any type of Summit, Summit Avenue did not benefit from that. So comprehensive planning, building across systems, that's the way that we need to do this. I was in a District 3 budget meeting, and it said for the, when I was in that meeting, you know, folks in my district have been in their houses for over 30 years, and they said, hey, we care about houselessness. And, and they said, well, we haven't looked at things holistically in the last 15 years, or a lot of these people have been in office for the last 15 years, and I think we should say time's up.
Thank you. We have a question directed to the mayoral candidates from YouTube.
And this will be the second of the last two questions, first of the last two questions.
Okay. And we'll start with Mr. Cummings. This person asked, "I would like you to address the safety issues at night and the homelessness on Summit Avenue."
Thank you for that. What has to be a part of the conversation when we're talking about crime and homelessness has to be the economic part of it, that there's a lack of economic opportunities in the east side of Greensboro. And I don't think that that's by accident. I think that there has been historically a kind of leaving behind of East Greensboro, that it's the other place, that those people with those problems over there won't come into our backyard, when historically, that side of Greensboro was the engine. There was a black middle class. There was innovation. There was industry. It was self-sufficient and self-serving, and we need to get back to that. To answer that, the first thing that I would do is, you got to have somebody with credibility to go into that area. I lived off there. I grew up off of Phillips Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings.
Oh, wow, that was a quick minute.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
You know, the homelessness is really all over. We've got over 50 camps all over Guilford County, and we've got to come up with a holistic solution to it. But we also have to really look at the data, because this is a serious, serious issue, because we've got tens of thousands of people in our county that are going to be homeless if we don't do something about that.
Mr. Perkins, excuse me. The question, "How will you address the safety issues at night and the homelessness on Summit Avenue?"
I think two things. Which part of Summit Avenue are you talking about?
Have you been on Summit?
Summit Avenue is eight miles long.
Right. Your, our question is, if you've been on Summit, you know where it is.
It's between, it's between, it's between, around Bessemer and Summit, in that area going north toward Phillips Avenue. Is that correct?
Oh, I don't know. This is your question. I can't...
And again, the question was open-ended, and Summit Avenue is a big street. And I'm sure there are other homeless areas along Summit Avenue other than there. I just want to know, number one, I think if we're talking about a safety issue, we're also talking about light, lighting. We're talking about places for them to go on a permanent basis. This is not a one-minute answer. It's something that's going to take a lot of thought. But in order to stop the homelessness in this community, we got to keep people from becoming homeless in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Boozerator, same question?
Could you repeat that question, please?
We would like this, they would like to know, "How would you address the safety issues at night and the homelessness on Summit Avenue?"
So safety issues at night, I'm assuming that's the whole city. So what we, what we are doing, and I want to advocate for our officers and for our fire department to make sure that everything is safe in the city. For instance, we need to start with the children. They need to know how to get out of a fire. As you all know, we had all of those children killed over the last several years for the actual homelessness on Summit Avenue. We need to make sure that we can send out our teams. We have a BEHART team that sends social workers out to see what the problem is. Why are the people homeless? But we also need the county to collaborate with us. We have only had one successful collaboration with the county. That was the Family Justice Center, one-stop shop. We need that again, because the county is the one who gets the federal and state phones for... for mental health, addiction, all of those things that sometimes keep people homeless on the streets. So, we continue that. Thank you.
Brother Drumright, I can ask one more question? Oh, we got a card up. Okay, Ms. Crystal, I am so sorry. Go right ahead.
I just wanted to address the Summit Avenue issue. I work off of Summit Avenue. I work at Rankin Elementary School. The students who died in the fire were my students. And it had nothing to do with homelessness. It had to do with landlords with substandard properties. That's what it had to do with. So, when we talk about how we can clean up Summit Avenue, we need to look at some of our commercial property owners who are allowing some camps to set up in that area. And then, we need to look at some of our landlords who have deteriorating apartment complexes in that area that continue to perpetuate this cycle of poverty. That's what we see on Summit Avenue. You don't see residential houses on Summit Avenue that are dilapidated. They look nice as you go down toward the old, I believe, McKeever School. Those homes are well-kept. But when you get to the commercial end of Summit Avenue, that's where your problem is. I have asked for the city of Greensboro...
Okay. This is the last question, and it's a yes or no. Everybody, yes or no? You can abstain. It's free country. But it's a yes or no. And then afterwards, we're going to give everyone 30 seconds for you to have your final word. You're so welcome, Mr. Smith. I'll even start with you. The final question is a yes or no. If the President of the United States of America declared that Greensboro, North Carolina, was an unsafe city and that the National Guard would be sent to our city, what would be your response to the President? Yes or no? Mr. Smith?
I'm going to abstain from that. It's not a local issue. I'm sorry.
Okay. They locally will be coming to the city of Greensboro. I'm... It's okay. I got you on your abstention. Zack not here. Ms. Parker? Yes or no?
I'm sorry. Say the question again. Sorry.
Pass the mic. Pass the mic, baby.
It's about Trump? No. I'm not doing it.
Thank you.
No.
Abstain? No. Absolutely not.
Abstain?
No.
No.
Not just no.
No.
No, Mr. President. I've got this.
Absolutely not. No.
Robbie?
Abstain?
No.
I'll say, hell, no.
All right. So, we're going to start with Ms. Tammy Thurman. And we're going to go around. We've got 30 seconds on the clock. We'd like for each candidate to have an opportunity to give us your best elevator speech. And you've got 30 seconds. Time starts now, Ms. Tammy.
Thank you. I think my best elevator speech revolves around, why do I do this? That is, because the basic tenet of my religion, which I hold very, very dear, is for us to heal the world. And it is our obligation to heal the world. And I do my best every day, serving as a city councilperson, to heal my little piece of the world.
Ms. Black?
We have had more than a decade to wait for change in District One. We have not seen an adequate change in District One. I am running for District One to bring that change, to advocate for that change, and hoping that I can bring what the community has expected for over a decade now from leadership.
Mr. Key, I'm so sorry. I didn't say your name. Mr. Key?
My last act as a city councilman was to extend Cone Boulevard, build the Ralph Johnson Way, connect it to Neilltown Farms, which opened up a major clogged artery in the East Greensboro system. Now, I'm going to extend East Cone Boulevard over to the urban loop, which makes 2,000 acres available for development. We're going to develop it like a carry, North Carolina. It will be the gateway into Greensboro from the north and the east. I still have time?
Did anybody tap me yet? You still got 30?
We're not going to develop it all like Cary. Some of it's going to be like...
Okay, time up now. Ms. Pender?
I'm going to lead with your city, your voice, your future. It takes you individually. It takes our, which is your, to come together. And I believe in we, the people. And I believe in service of community. And together, not individually, together, we can take this city forward so that when we look back 20 years from now, we can say we were part of the change for the next generation.
Thank you. Two?
I'll say that experience matters, that we've had some great successes for the city of Greensboro, but we still have a lot of work to do. There are some communities that have not been participating in these successes, and they need to do that. I believe that Greensboro is on the cusp of greatness. I hope you believe with me. Let's believe together. Let's believe in Greensboro together. Let's go big. Thank you.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes, for, well, about a decade. I've been in community, feet down, listening to what people want in our community, especially in District Two, the needs that they want to see met from the city council. I definitely have gone to the council and asked for things that our community has asked for. As a group, as a coalition, we continue to build those coalitions. And again, I will say it again. I want to run to put people first and bring their voices into city council.
Mr. Allen?
I'm a community organizer who was born and raised here in Greensboro, North Carolina. I'm the youngest candidate on the ballot. The median age in this city is 34 years old. We have to invest in our young people, and we have to give them leadership now. They're not only the future, they are right now. So, we have to step into the future by handing over the resources that we have to the people who are going to lead us to greatness in this city. And so, I thank you all for coming, and I hope you visit IrvingAllen.com, and I hope I earned your vote.
Did we lose Mr. Hawkins? Okay. Mr. Ignak?
Thank you. So, what I want to bring to this city is to get everybody together. Even though we are, I mean, in a specific district, I want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. And because we are voting on everything in the city council, we would have to be very knowledgeable about everything. So, I would really like to be part of that. I would reach out to anybody who comes to me with a question and try to forward that.
Ms. Walker?
There is a fierce urgency to right now. And I want to say that District Two can no longer suffer any of the inequities, the disparities, and the injustices. You get to vote, and no one should ever tell you that you have to wait for change that is urgent right now.
Ms. Rawl?
You know, I grew up in an under-invested area in southeast Washington, DC. And it's what motivates me to run. It's where my family depended on. When you talk about why people are on the streets or doing crime, it's because of choices and alternatives and opportunity. I'm running for to create those things. I've worked with cities across the country. I've been in this business for 30 years. You will know that as a council member for you, I will not be afraid of hard work. I understand where the opportunities are, and I will work to get there.
Thank you. Ms. Franklin?
Can you really quickly just repeat the question? I want to make sure I'm answering it precisely.
I need you to sum up what you're going to do in 30 seconds.
All right. I heard that. Now, what I'm going to do for Greensboro is based on my, you know, my vision, my future. And that's because I'm a child of Greensboro, East Greensboro. My father was a child of East Greensboro. And my children are the future of Greensboro. And what that means is Greensboro needs someone who's a strategist, who can think outside the box, and who can execute. That also includes, and I want to say this to you, thinking about how the current administration is ripping grants and funding from cities for not listening to certain things. So, don't think just because I answered the way I did, I don't love the city.
Mr. McKenney?
This will be one of the most consequential elections this city has seen in its history. The next council will transform the city from what you know it today to the city that you can imagine it to be. I want to be your voice on that council because it needs to be inclusive. We need to be able to give their young people a reason to choose Greensboro first and not Charlotte or Raleigh. We need to put attainable housing in reach again. And we need to have inclusive economic growth. I want to be your voice if you'll give me that chance. McKenneyforgsod.com is my website.
Parker, thank you. Ms. Parker?
I am the most endorsed candidate on this ballot. I'm running against two Republicans. I've been campaigning all of 2025, earning your vote in his absence, both in our communities and on the campaign trail. So, I didn't do as well as I would like tonight because two seconds, two minutes, 20 years, it's too short of time to tell you what we need to do in the urgency of now, y'all. And the community is my resume. Please ask so many people in this community how I have stood with you for 15 years doing grassroots organizing in our communities.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I am not a career politician. I am not a part of the status quo. I love my community. I love Greensboro. I've made difficult decisions in Greensboro as a business owner. I've hired people. I've fired people. I've built businesses. I am experienced, and I'm asking your vote. I am also asking that you turn back the hands of time to when Jim Melvin was our mayor and bring back business leadership and common sense back to our community. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Cummings?
I'm ready to make history. I'm ready to make history. We are 43% of the population in Greensboro, but we've never had a mayor that looks like your uncle, your father, your brother in this wonderful city. I think we can do better for it. I'm ready to make history. The Learn Here, Earn Here program, a senior citizens resource center that can take the place of what the federal government has taken away. We don't have to wait for the federal government. The fierce urgency of now starts with turning the page, new leadership.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Boozer waiter? And I would like to ask, if you have to leave, please stick around so that our host, he has a few words he'd like to say. Thank you, Ms. Boozer waiter.
So, you can go to my website and see my proven leadership, my experience, and what I have done for this city. And I do not want us to lose all of the things that are being done now. I want to keep us on that trajectory of success that we are experiencing because I know there are many ways, with our collective brains that we have, and there are brilliant people sitting up here. But we need someone to guide, someone to nurture, someone who can help them along the way so we can do it.
Thank you, Ms. Boozer waiter. Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
You know, there's not a Democratic or Republican way to fix a pothole. What we do in city government is fixing potholes. We've got to do it efficiently, and we've got to do it as inexpensively as possible. I want to work with Democrats and Republicans to fix some daggone potholes in Greensboro. We're going to need some serious funding in this community to do things like infrastructure, work with our homelessness, work with our housing. And we're going to do that by getting it from both Republicans and Democrats.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Before I introduce and I host for this evening, I want to say a few things, just a few. One, you chose to run for a position. That means you chose to beat the street. You chose to be in front of people. You chose to have things coming at you, and you'd be able to handle them quick, fast, and in a hurry. You chose that. If you can't handle it... Because this community right now, we need leaders. Not people complaining. We don't need no more of that. I grew up smelling white oak... I grew up before they built Patio Place. Before they built where we connect to King's Forest. I lived through white flight. So, I have no pity for anybody that can't tell me where Summit is, Bestsmar Avenue is. I don't have no pity for none of that because you want the vote, you've got to work. It's keeping it real. I don't know any other way to do it. It doesn't matter what side of town you represent. If you have never been on the street and you want to represent that side of town, if you have never been somewhere and watched somebody sleeping on the street and it's cold, take the time to do that now because you want folk to vote for you. I live in the county. Thank God, I ain't got to vote for none of you. Because y'all got to work. Y'all got to put in some work for these folks. I'm just saying. Now, I'm going to say this, too. Our host, when he asked me to do this, I don't know if he really knew what he was getting. But I love this man. Our host, Pastor Gregory Drumright.
Thank you. And let's hear it for our moderator, Dr. Wild Irish Rose, Dr. Irish Spencer. Also, let's hear it for every one of these candidates for being gracious with their time tonight. I just want to do this really quickly, really quickly. Please don't leave me hanging. I want to acknowledge, first of all, my freshman year, actually, prior to my freshman year, she is a legendary community leader, civil rights activist, who anytime she graces a place where I am hosting an event, I always give honor to whom honors due. Dr. Joyce Johnson joined us tonight. And we honor the late Reverend Nelson Johnson. I want to be honest about this. This is our first city council summit, and we made some mistakes tonight. We made some mistakes.
I did. You didn't either. We ain't make no mistakes.
We will get tighter, and we will get better because we want you to continue to come out. We are collecting every question that you submitted, and we will work to find a way to get these questions to the candidates. And perhaps they will consider answering them on their social media. We've been asked to host another summit We've been asked to host another summit on the other side of the outcome of the general elec, of the primary election. We will consider that in the incoming days. I want to say thank you to my media team, I want to say thank you to our street team, I want to say thank you to our host team, I want to say thank you to Ms. Pamela Stubbs, I want to say thank you to Mr. Charles for hosting our candidates, thank you to everybody that made this summit special. We had several candidates that had some conflicts, one of which, T. Diane Bellamy Smalls, had a conflict, but she sent forth some critical information that I want to uplift. You need to go vote. Currently, they're out of a city of over 207,000 votes currently in this primary thus far, there have only been 1,300 cast. Polls will, for early voting, wherein you can register and vote, one stop. They will be open for this primary through October 4th, all right? Election Day for the primary is October 7th. You can go to the Coliseum, you can go to the courthouse, and there's one other place to vote. Jamestown, Birmill Park. Those are the three areas where you can cast your vote during the Coliseum. Once again, that's four. Coliseum, courthouse, Birmill Park, and Jamestown. Jamestown, Jamestown. Please, go and go vote early. Do not let anybody turn you away. If you don't have the credentials that they're seeking, cast a provisional ballot. That is critical. We must get our community out to vote. And justice for the next generation, and Citadel will be mobilizing students from these campuses to vote. I want to say to the candidates, we apologize for going overtime, some had to leave, but you all were able to adjust your schedules to stay here this late. Thank you so very much. 30 seconds, one minute, two minutes is not enough time for you all to address the community's concerns. So, thank you for just even trying, thank you for trying, thank you for trying, thank you for trying. And thank you. Mr. Matheny did send his response as to whether or not he would vote up or down if the federal administration were to target Greensboro or identify Greensboro for military infiltration, and his answer was no. Lastly, the Citadel Church, host of our event, meets in this hotel, but not for too much longer. After holding space in 28 places to worship with our 85% millennial congregation across this city for the last 22 years, we are moving to close on a church property, and if, if, if you want to make a donation to our new home, please visit our Hope for a Home campaign board and scan the QR code. We just kicked off that campaign within the last several weeks, and we've already raised $35,000. So, please help us, thank you, everybody, God bless you, have a good evening.